The Montgomery County Board of Education combined meeting Tuesday, April 18th, 27th. Central office is now called to order. First on the agenda, we have an invocation by my pastor, spiritual leader, Reverend Pastor Giles William, New Providence Missionary Baptist Church. Welcome around, Father.
Thank you, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I told someone tonight I would get you around at the wrong place. Let us pray. All wise, eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come and to fellowship one for another. We thank you for guiding us through a day that we've never seen before. And we thank you for all of your love and your protection. We ask now, oh God, that you bless our school boards, our superintendent, and bless her staff. And most importantly, we ask that you bless our children, and that you would give them a good man to do the thing that are right, the things that are just. And we ask now that you would make them honorable, that they learn to respect their teachers and respect their peers. We pray, oh God, that you would do this. You told us to ask, and it shall be given. Seek, and we shall find, and knocking the door shall be opened. We come right now knocking and asking in the name of Jesus that you come and make this system a better system. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. We do have a court present. I need a motion to have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'm going to be approved the revised agenda.
I didn't get it revised, yeah? Oh. It has been a little improper second that we adopt the revised agenda. First item Monday meeting will be... Oh, yes. Those who are in favor, let's see by short hands. That says unanimous. All right. Recognitions by Mr. Tom Salter. Good afternoon.
We have one recognition this evening that we're very excited about. We have a student athlete who has received many distinctions, including some that are familiar to Montgomery Public Schools. Will Bianca Jackson please come forward? And she's joined this evening by her coach Cynthia Thompson and her principal, April Lee. Bianca has been named Miss Basketball for the state of Alabama for 2017. Also joining Bianca this afternoon is her mother and also athletic director, Coach Shines from Brutech. So, there we go. Bianca was named Miss Basketball by the Sports Writers Association. She was also named the Class 5A Player of the Year. She's a Brutech senior and has signed a letter of intent with, wait for it, University of South Carolina. And those of you who follow basketball may know that the national champion came from South Carolina, the women's basketball team came from South Carolina. So that tells you a lot about her talent, that the national championship team wants her on their team. Bianca has some historic events in her high school career. She was Montgomery's first ever girls' basketball player to be named to the first team, the ASWA's All-State Team, four times. She was just the eighteenth in state history to accomplish that. She also once scored fifty-eight points in a single game, fifth most by a girls' basketball player in state history. She's got games. She's got, she's got, she's got it focused in. Earlier this year, Bianca was also named the Gatorade Player of the Year for the state. In announcing that distinction, Gatorade noted that she has, was chosen not just for her basketball skills, but also for her high grade point average and exemplary character. And she's not the first Miss Basketball for MPS. Last year, of course, it was Jasmine Walker of Jeff Davis who won the distinction. So it looks like we're on a streak, and we're going to try to keep it going. Please join the board in congratulating Alabama's Miss Basketball 2017 Bianca Jackson. Thank you very much, thank you. And, come on in, guys. And right on time, Dr. Keith, Ms. Allen, right on time, we have the Carver Drill Team who has come in. Come on in, guys. We'd like to salute the JROTC Drill Team that received national recognition. They have such a large squad that we asked them to bring the seniors to represent the entire group. This evening, we have five seniors on the drill team. Ariel Regisram, Shalandra, I hope I got that right, was I close, Saunders, Kaiser Hicks, Caleb Cassidy, and Troy Pearson. And they're joined by their instructor, Sergeant First Class Michael Walker. The team competed in four events at the JROTC National Drill Championship in Louisville, and they're now ranked twenty-seventh overall in the nation. That's, that's saying a lot. The team also ranks in the top ten in the nation in two events. They've earned a fifth-place ranking in the unarmed dual exhibition event and seventh-place in the unarmed regulation. The team competed against ninety-one schools, and the board has signed a congratulatory resolution for them. Whereas Montgomery Public Schools is committed to promoting leadership among students and the importance of self-discipline and teamwork in accomplishing goals. And whereas the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps is a program that teaches students character education, student achievement, wellness, leadership, and diversity, working to produce successful students and citizens while fostering in each school a more constructive and disciplined learning environment. And whereas the Carver High School JROTC under the leadership of Sergeant Michael Walker and Sergeant Stanley Murray is recognized as among the best units in the United States. And whereas the Carver High School Drill Team recently received national recognition as a top-ten team in two events and ranked in the twenty-seventh, is the twenty-seventh best unit in America. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education congratulates and recognizes the leadership and the outstanding cadets of the Carver Senior High JROTC for their hard work and for their outstanding accomplishments, signed by the Montgomery Board of Education and Superintendent, County of Montgomery, State of Alabama, on this, the eighteenth of April, 2017. And all this hardware, you know they set off the metal detector, but that's okay. Thank you, guys, very nice, ladies, very nice work. We appreciate it.
Mr. Salter, can we ask the students what they're going to do when y'all graduate? We'll just start with this young lady, and Bianca Daniel, please.
I'm going to the Army Academy.
Wow. Great, young lady, yes.
I'm going to college, and I'm going to military academy, and I'm actually going to the education academy.
Great.
I'm planning on continuing my Army National Guard career and attending Troy University and participating in Army ROTC.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Sergeant, what are you going to do when you grow up? There you go, outstanding, but we appreciate you guys very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, again, congratulations. Thank you, Tom. And I guess the world can see we have a whole lot of good things going on in Montgomery Public Schools. Keep up the good work. The next item on the agenda is the scheduled public comments. I will read now the script for the public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is public comments. It is important that we follow the rules of order and protocol in making public comments. The rules and procedures are as follows. Requests must be made in advance and writing to superintendent's office by four thirty PM on the Tuesday preceding the meeting date. Request must have specified the nature of the business to be taken up with the board in the name of the person who will address the board to be added to the agenda. Communications must be respectful. Discussing specific student or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided. However, you may be contacted for follow-up by the superintendent or a designated. Public comments may not exceed five minutes. The board chair has full authority to terminate the remarks of any person whose comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended, when asked to stop speaking by the board chair or otherwise is inappropriate. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seat, out of the auditorium, or off MPS property, depending on the level of disruption. The first individual that's on our scheduled comments, Ms. Katie Brown, our children. Is she here? Not here. Secondly, Ms. Karen Jones, Retaliation, Complaints, and Accountability. Karen Jones. Well, they are not here. Next person, Mr. Daryl Andrews, School Procedures. Daryl Andrews.
First, I'd like to say good evening to all of you, and I've come before you with a problem, and it's labeled under School Procedures, and had, recently had someone to transfer from a different city here, and they had difficulty doing that. And with a special-need child, the child has missed more days out of school than, than the law would allow them to because of school procedures. And I know that under Section 504 and also under the Americans with Disability Act, that this child has been, I guess you could say that he's been, been abused by the system, the procedures of the system. He's gone to three schools within a month's time. And, and I can't do, say specifics, but he is supposed to use a wheelchair, but he was told that he didn't need the wheelchair because they have elevators. And this has worn on this child. He's mentally, he's wondering why he's not in the school that he was on to with his other brothers and sisters. So I, we've called and called different people and, for no results. Finally, finally got some results, got him in school. But with his disability, I, I feel that, that he needs his wheelchair. The doctors say he does. If you know Medicare, Medicare wouldn't pay for one if they didn't need it. But when you tell a child that they don't need their wheelchair, but because you have access to an elevator and you give the child a key, that's just not right. The child suffers from spinal, in case you want to know. So we, my thing is, is that there has to be a better procedure of transferring a child into the system than what has gone on with this child. I, it's personal to me because as a pastor, I care about everybody and every child. And I believe that every child should be afforded an equal opportunity. And this child has been discriminated against because of his disability. One school he went in and they told him, no, 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 you can't come in here. Went to another, they sent him to another school. No, we haven't heard anything about you supposed to be here. On top of that, the parent is having to, has had to transport this child from one place to another, withdraw him, put him back in again, withdraw him, put him back in again. And this created a hardship on the parent. Raising four kids, you've got four kids in the system, two at Lee, one at Howland Avenue, and now one at Brubeck. So I, I really, really respectfully to you all, I really respect all of you as board members, but I think that there's something that needs to be done in this case. Not only in this case, but in cases to come afterwards. And I would like to also add that, I would like to file, I don't know the procedures, I need to find out if there's a book or guidelines that you go by for enrolling kids and why the parents don't get this stuff when they enroll the kids. Is there anything that tells you where a kid can, can go to a certain school, or has to go to a certain school because of certain disabilities or whatever? Transportation, you've had problems with that? It's been one thing after another trying to get this child. Kids are taking classes that they've already had. This is, this is an ongoing thing, and I'm not understanding why. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Have you talked to Ms. Katrina Johnson on this? Someone called me, it was something about transportation at one time. Did you have a transportation problem at one time?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other was the school that had a second floor and no elevator?
Right.
But nobody got back to me, so I thought it had been taken care of.
Well, I, I can't call names, but I've talked to, I've got a list of names of people that I've talked to, and even had someone to hang up on me.
But it wasn't me.
No, 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 ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay.
I just told you I love you.
Oh, I love you, I love you. Mr. Allen, I would like to make this comment in that, I asked Mr. President if I could... No, no, I think I could. Ms. Allen, she was trying to...
Yeah, I was, I'm aware of your situation because you talked with my secretary when everything was settled. And in my understanding, from what you're saying right now, your complaint is about the process that you had to go through in getting there. And I just want to offer you an apology for your having to go through all that you've just identified. And we will indeed look at the process again. There's someone that's going to be meeting you right outside the door there in just a minute to get some specifics so that we can know where everything went wrong. So we apologize to you. If you need us, you, this was your final stop.
Yes, it was.
And so if you need us, you know how to get in touch with us.
Yes.
Okay. And they will also tell you if you feel that you really need to do the grievance, they'll tell you where to get the forms and all of that. Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make this comment, though. Having been on the board for almost two years, I had learned that the protocol for parents and people that had complaints, that typically they would call their district board member. I get calls from everybody. And I want, you know, I would hope that the board reacts just like I do. You always get a call back from me and email the day that you send it, and not only do you get that, I email Margaret Allen, I have you put it in, whatever the complaint is, I have you put it in email, and I email it to her and copy you. And that way, you know that I have, I've done it, and then if it doesn't happen, I will tell you this, every time I have asked Ms. Allen to, to help me with me following the protocol that she's asked, she has helped me. So I want, you know, that's the way to, I apologize to you. I didn't hear anything of it. If I had heard of it, I would have kept on it to the, to the end, and I, and I, I think Ms. Briers just didn't know. She had assumed like she said that it was done. And we all apologize for something like that. It should never happen.
I thought that. I didn't know that you had certain board members that was responsible for certain schools or whatever.
Yeah.
I did not know that up until yesterday, and your name came up, well, last night. And it was too late then, but I do want to, still want to speak with you as well.
Well, the lady that spoke last night, if you were there when she said she sent things to the, to the board, the one lady that spoke up, I busted my arraion to get to her, gave her my email, personal cell number, and she wasn't in my district. She called me about ten minutes ago while I was here, and I'll, she'll be my first call when I leave here. And I told her that. So if you'll, you, there are, I mean, I apologize, but I'm telling every parent in here, if you contact me, no matter if I'm over your district or not, you will get, you will get an answer that day, that night.
I'm pretty sure most of us will do the same. You know, the only difference is, and Pastor, you know, when I spoke to you coming in, did not get, and if I had, I would have certainly responded. But I've given you my cellphone, so anytime there is any questions or concern, feel free, do not hesitate to give me a call.
Thank you.
The next interview, Mr. Claire Harden, Magnet School Selection for ninth grade.
Good evening.
President Fordfield, Vice President Keith, and other board members. I'm Claire Harden, and I've come before you today to share a ninth grade, Magnet School selection issue from a student perspective. To understand where I'm coming from, it may help you to know a little bit about me. I have been at Magnet School since I was in kindergarten, and I'm currently in the eighth grade at Floyd Middle Magnet School. I'm taking geometry and advanced English. I'm on math counts team, the science Olympia team, and I was the only student from Montgomery County to participate in the Alabama State Science and Engineering Fair. When I was in the fifth grade at Bear Exploration Center, my brother was in the eighth grade at Floyd. He applied for and was accepted into LAM. The LAM principal at that time told him that having all As and taking geometry in the eighth grade made it easier to be accepted into LAM. So when I got to Floyd, I made sure to work hard, make all As in every class every nine weeks, and take out the brother in seventh grade in geometry in eighth so that I could go to LAM. While I've been at Floyd, MPS switched Magnet Selection for LAM to a random lottery. But even though there is a random lottery for ninth grade selection at LAM, all of the Floyd kids were qualified and applied, got in the first year the lottery was used. So I didn't work. And next year, most of the Floyd kids who are qualified and applied to LAM got in. But we were told that the new LAM building at, at one center would be bigger, so more students would be accepted, so I didn't work. Now I've applied to LAM. I even filled out my course selection for classes that I want to take at LAM next year, and I was decided to be able to choose AP World History, Algebra II, and Spanish II. Mr. Monson, LAM principal, told me and my classmates that the new LAM can only have the same number of students as current LAM, not more. So now I am worried, and I'm not alone. Some kids in my grade, around twenty, some who also still want to LAM, have applied to LAM as a first choice, and we are worried that we are not going to get in this year. Some of them are here tonight, and I am letting some of them, which I will leave with you with your permission. My classmates and I want to join other Floyd former students who are doing great things at LAM, like being officers and moving out of the LAM society and winning debate and science Olympia tournaments. We have worked just as hard as those former Floyd students did to get in the same place they were when they were accepted into LAM from Floyd. On their behalf, I ask you to please continue to admit Floyd students, including by admitting us first off the waiting list. There is another solution that will help kids at Freezing Magnet Middle Schools. I personally know kids at Carver Middle Magnet involved in academia who want to go to Brutech, but because of the way the ninth grade Magnet selection is structured, they cannot choose to attend Brutech. They have to wait for the lottery and hope for a waitlist spot. It would make sense to me for the LAM principal and the Brutech principal to allow these students to swap spots based on first choice selections for the ninth grade. It makes sense to me that kids who are better suited for technology should be allowed to choose technology school, and kids who are ready for and want to accept the challenge of LAM should be able to choose it. When my parents applied to Bear for me when I was five, they could not have known what was best for me in the ninth grade. I would love to be able to make that choice now. I can't help but wonder, if we were talking about football team, wouldn't we want to select the best players and put them into decisions where they play best? Thank you for allowing me to speak to you about ninth grade Magnet Selection from a student's perspective.
Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Claire, I want to thank you for standing up and saying that. I also want to thank the people and the students because we stand up here forever saying it's about the children. And when you get up there with your voice, I'm going to say one thing, just seeing this, you guys have done your homework, and I hope you have heard, and I'm very, very proud of you standing up. And I hope, no matter what happens, that you will continue to stand up the rest of your life.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
The committee that you formulated on working with things dealing with our Magnet programs, and I think that was one of the things that I had talked to you about because if, if they're in the Magnet program, I know, I feel like they shouldn't be tracked, so to speak, because if a child decides, because we got to college and didn't know what we wanted to do the first year. So if you have a student who desires to go to LAM and they are scheduled to go to Brutech because that's a feeder pattern for, from Floyd, we really need to consider doing something about that because, number one, I know the situation this past year, there were people who were assigned to go to Brutech but really wanted to go to BTW or what have you. And I'm, I'm saying perhaps if they wanted to switch, and I know there were several parents that wanted to switch, and that both parents wanted to switch, so is there some way we can consider doing that? Because they shouldn't be tracked just because they're at Floyd to have to go to Brutech or if they, they're at BTW, I mean, at Ball and go to BTW. If a child was there in the program, is it, and I'm sure that our lawyer will look into all of this, but I, I agree with the young lady, and I agree with Pastor.
And so do I.
Yeah.
It's not a matter of us not wanting to do this.
No, I know we don't, that's not it. I'm just saying, is there some type of law that requires us to do this? And if it is, then we need to see what we can do to, to rectify that, or give, give our students a choice because they work hard for what it is that they want, and we should deny them the opportunity. If they're in a Magnet program and want to go to a Magnet school, then they should be allowed to do that. I just can't see what the real problem is there.
I totally agree with you on that, and that is one thing that the Equity Committee talked about.
Right.
When we open this up, we are going to have to be ready with space everywhere to accommodate everybody. And it's not just, it won't just be twenty that will have the opportunity to go. It should be anyone who qualifies that will need to have the opportunity to go. I have said to Claire's mom that, you know, we, we need to work, there, there's work that needs to be done beyond where we are with the Magnet program. What we are, what we are doing right now is what is written on paper. We are, we're following the integrity of that process. This, this does not mean that a new process can't be worked out, and there needs to be lots of conversations with lots of people about how we actually do that. There needs to be a change at another middle school that would make some adjustments to how things are done. We, we know all of that, it's just that everything can't and couldn't be done this year. I know that doesn't help Claire and her friends with their desire for this year because they have worked hard to get to where they want to be, or at least to know where they want to be. And I, I wish I had the solution right here, and if anyone else can think of one that does not jeopardize the documents and the truth that we have put out there about how we're doing business, if there is anything to do that won't compromise that, that anyone can think of for this year, then, you know, I, I welcome that. Otherwise, we're going to have to... Otherwise, we're gonna have to do it, you know, like I told them, next year, I, I see it being done differently.
Well, could, what I'm asking, perhaps, those parents, and I know they are at least five or six, they wanted to swap out. They have the space there. They have been given the space. They know that, you know, that they have that slot or whatever. But the thing is, they want to swap out among themselves. It's bad against the law.
I, I don't say it's against the law, but any, any new thing we start, we need to be ready to offer it to as many people as want to do that same thing.
Mr. President?
Well, um.
You can't see me down here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um, I, what I'd like to ask is, Mrs. Allen, do we have a list of students, current eighth grade Magnet students, that are not interested in going to their zoned or their tracked high school? Because first of all, I think we just, I think that's what we need to know. We need to know what it is and, and the amount, the multitude of what the issue is. How many of those eighth graders don't want to go to the high school that they're tracked to go to? And if we could get some kind of number, we might could figure it out, where the principals could get together and go, hey, I've got eight here, you've got ten. There's got to be, I think sometimes we're making a mountain out of a long hill. Um, I do agree and I'm thankful. Well, no, but I do want you to follow the law, Mrs. Allen, but what I'm saying is you've got to know the size of the problem.
So we can put it out there to every school and ask.
Every eighth grade.
Every eighth grade school and just say, do you want to go to a different school?
Well, I think there needs to be almost like a, a, excuse me, at the Magnet Equity Committee meeting, we talked about it. There almost needs to be two rounds of, of applications, and there needs to be one first for those that are already in the Magnet schools that have kept their GPAs or whatever the requirements are. And then let them do their round first, let them settle, and then open it up for everybody else.
Uh, and you could do that, I, I, I believe that you could do it with respect to the number of available slots. And, uh, whatever those available slots are that would be at Lamb, then certainly those individuals, I wouldn't see unless it, again, as you mentioned, uh, something to do with legal. If not, then I don't see anything, uh, that would block that if we say and put a, you know, a tap on it, where you say, well, the number of slots that are available.
Right.
And that would in and cap it all like that.
I think you and I agree the same.
If it's five, then you've got five that could get in.
I agree.
Uh, five is better than zero. At least we're gonna address the needs of some of the children. We have those desires. All of the children are not gonna have that desire.
But we know that those that are already enrolled that have kept their GPA and all of the requirements, they will, they will move up to ninth grade in Magnet School. So we know that we have those seats for those students that are current eighth grade Magnet students. So let's get them all settled in, in their seats, and then find out, like you said, Mr. Fordfield, how many slots are left? And then open it up to the public.
I am, Mr. President, if I may just kind of interject here, I'm all about fairness. And I think about the students who are sitting in traditional schools who are also putting in the work.
All right.
And I'm concerned that if we let everything settle, then we continue to miss that population. Now, I'm not against it. I say if we can expand it, let's expand it. That's the fairest thing to do. But there is a process and laws, unfortunately, right now, that we have to stay in the guise of. And, and I don't know the process, what the process has fallen in, is, you know, this is my first time having to deal with this issue. But I just want to say, you know, let's think about all the children who are putting in the work.
Absolutely. I agree.
And work making those As and give everyone a opportunity. Um, I know in our traditional schools, they are, they don't have a choice unless their school is in need of support. And they too are assigned to a school, and they have a feeder pattern that they have to follow as well. I know it doesn't sound nice, but I just want to keep things fair.
I know, I agree.
I think what, what, what you, like you said, she'll do on the board, what you, what I think you're missing here is the fact that those students that we're talking about are already in the Magnet mode. They are already zoned to, uh, have those slots. They are zoned to move forward. What I was saying, what I still say is, if they want to swap out, that's my thing, if they want to swap out, they are already getting the track. Right. I mean, I'm not, but anybody else from getting in and all that has nothing to do with the new people coming in. This is for those students who are already tracked to go to a feeder pattern. Let them swap out, if their parents and if the students want to swap out. But that's a long discussion that we could do at, at later days, not belabor, belabor that tonight.
We want to help you. We're just trying to get to.
Yeah, we're trying to get to, right. Yes, ma'am.
I know I don't speak up in meetings much unless it's a problem, but Claire, is that your name? Claire, I just want to acknowledge in front of the community, the board, and everyone, you're in the eighth grade. I have been practicing law for seventeen years. And to see you stand up here, your argument was sound, it was solid, it was concise. It was, I, I started smiling halfway through, because I was like, this is phenomenal. Um, and you fostered a discussion, uh, in a way, on a very important topic that I haven't seen anything like this in a minute. Um, and I'm saying this specifically because I'm a lawyer, so I recognize that type of thing. I don't know if you're interested in going to law school or what, but I just want to publicly acknowledge that what you have just done, standing there, writing that, and the way you, it's not just a writing, but your mind, the way you presented that argument, is phenomenal. And I just want to encourage you to keep thinking and to keep standing. And I want to encourage you all and your friends and everybody else to know, this is what happens when young people stand up. This is what happens when young people get together, they take issues on themselves, they think through them, and they present solutions. Uh, when you say it seems to me like I said, whoa, so I just want to encourage you to continue regardless of the outcome, and I want to applaud you and affirm you publicly.
And be mindful, she's an eighth grader.
Yes.
And that's a lot to be said, and you can speak volumes for you.
And we're gonna take this into con, serious consideration to help. We just, you know, we just gotta make sure that we iron out all of the kinks and make sure that you all can get what you need and everyone else. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, did Miss Brown come in? A.T. Brown? Well, you, well, your name has been called, but we'll call it again since you did show up. We will call your name again.
Are you calling me now?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
I appreciate you calling me now, and I appreciate the young lady that was standing here. And the Magnet program, uh, as I said before, all schools should be Magnet. And they develop the children so that they can send them out into the community to do the work that is needed to be done. Now, since I've said that, and since I talked at the meeting last night, I'm gonna shut up.
Amen. Amen. I did hear that Miss Karen Jones had, um, shown, so at this time, Miss Karen Jones, your hair. Retaliation, Complaints, and Accountability.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've come before you because of retaliation, complaints, and accountability from your special ed director. Um, he's getting real sickening, the way that they're calling the police for no justifiable reason. I record every IEP in due process hearing. And you could hear when the MPS employees, especially the special ed director.
Uh, excuse me, um, reference to employees.
You said, now you mentioned names. I'm getting the title.
Excuse, but that identifies the individual?
No, they, do y'all know who she is? Cause she doesn't do anything. So when I read, when you all have given me the rules before, you said, don't call their names. Then you didn't tell me the rules about their positions.
Well, maybe we'll change to references.
You all wait, and, and that's, again, retaliation. You see, MPS continues to engage in illicit activities to prevent the furtherance of my protected activity as an advocate, because I filed several complaints through OCR and through the state against MPS. When you're denying me the opportunity, and you need to look at the resolution agreement through OCR that was signed by Barbara Thompson, and I'll, um, let them know tonight what has happened and, but retaliation, complaints, and accountability. Anytime I send emails to you, Superintendent, we are not getting any responses. Since the incident that happened at Lee High School a month ago, I have had so many parents in the special needs communicate, community, to reach out to me. It is pathetic that nobody is listening to these children. I am alleging and continue to allege that MPS is falsifying and forging documents to backdate and backtrack documents. These children' IEPs really have not been fulfilled in well over a year. I'll say up to sometimes two and a half and three years, and it's embarrassing to go to these meetings. And when you're trying to look for documents, they sit over there and say, call the police. She's been disrupted. Everything is recorded, and if you want to listen to the recordings, call me, because I will allow you to listen. My number is three, three, four, four, three, zero, nine, zero, five, nine. That's my new number. I emailed the superintendent. I get, my, I have found an app on this phone so that it won't ring before six thirty A.M. It will stop ringing by ten P.M. Our children's needs aren't being met, especially our five oh four students, students with disabilities. And just, it's pathetic, the anger that's going on in these schools, because for some odd reason, emails are being sent out by your special needs director, even in mediation hearings. And I have that recording in which she verbally attacked a parent. And I, you need to listen to your employees. Ms. Allen, you need to step up, and it's so, the insult of it all is that you worked in special needs over thirty years. You know protocol. Nobody, the, the policies and procedures are not being handled. You just copy and paste them, because you're not adhering to the rules that you set. When I tried to tell the parent, we're gonna go by these rules that are, are in the student code of conduct. You're not, nobody just wants to do it. So I'm very happy that the state is coming in for accountability on these issues, because I wish I could get you all, your, your emails, but when you try to email you all, you have a limited character space in which I can't get to you all the information you need to see, the audio that you need to hear. Because the way they're portraying Karen Jones in such a negative light, it's just, it, it really says a lot about MPS. And let me tell you something, I'm gonna stand my ground, and nobody is gonna disrespect me. The meeting is over. When they start throwing pins and staplers and when they get upset, when you start pointing your hand at me like that, the meeting is over, because you just disrespected me. And I won't let, allow anybody to disrespect me, period.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, you, you've been, your point has been well taken. The, the, the board has heard, the superintendent has heard, and certainly I'm sure they will get back with you in a time.
No, she won't. She hasn't this year. Go ahead, Mrs.
Ms. Jones, I thought you had my email. It's Dr. Lisa Keith at charter.net. Lisa's spelled L-E-S-A. My telephone number is three, three, four, five, four, six, zero, six, nine, three. Nine, three.
And Ms. Jones, I think all of our telephone numbers and emails are on.
On the website.
The website.
The link that goes directly to the, the school.
Uh, I think what you're doing is using, um, um, the, the same thing that they use for the Montgomery Public School employees. And that's not our, those are not our, those are not our email addresses.
Did it change on the website, cause when we.
No, you should have, mine is correct on the website, because it's R.P.O.R.T.E. at charter.net.
Okay, cause your school is, I have two or three of your schools. I have very strong issues about some things going on.
Just shoot me an, shoot me an email. R.P.O.R.T.E. at charter.net.
And I think you have mine here, but I give it to you anyway.
What is it?
M.L. Brier, four, three, six, zero, at AOL dot com.
Thank you very much.
And mine is my first name, A.R.I.C.A. dot Smith, zero, eight, at Outlook dot com.
And I'll just.
E.L.E.D. three K at charter dot net.
And some is gonna start costing MPS a whole lot of money, because there's so many people rectified lawsuits. And I'm ready to get a class action started. I really am. I can't do it anymore. It's too many parents. I have about thirty-five parents.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms., um, thank you, Ms., um, Jones. The, the next item on the agenda will be citizen comments. There were none? I told, one, three questions. Um, do we have Beth Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, she heard straight. Well, let, let me read you the script for the citizen comments. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is citizen comments. It's important that we follow the rules of order and protocol in making public comments. The rules and procedures are as follows. Citizens may sign up for comments before a board meeting. Citizen comments must be on the agenda item. Forms for citizen comments will be available thirty minutes before regular scheduled board meetings. Agenda topics to be addressed must be identified on the form in order to speak. Um, individual citizen comments may not exceed three minutes. Total thirty minutes are allotted for all citizen comments. Communications must be respectful. During specific, discussing specific student or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided. However, you may be contacted for follow-up by the superintendent or as needed. The board chair has full authority to terminate the remarks of any person who comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended, when asked to stop speaking by the board chair, or is otherwise inappropriate. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seat out of the auditorium or, and of MPS property, depending on the level of disruption. Ms. Beth Morgan, I think you have, um, agenda item, Lamb Building Project.
Yes, sir. Thank you for letting me speak.
That's all.
I'm Beth Morgan. I'm the Lamb Whinders president of the parent organization for Lamb High School. And I would like to share some excerpts from a letter that was written, um, to Mr. Dotson regarding the new building. Written on April thirteenth, we would like to express our appreciation to you and your staff for including Lamb Whinders in the meeting last Thursday to discuss the progress of construction at the new Lamb campus. We are so excited about how this new campus will help meet the needs of Lamb students and look forward to our transition into the new facility. During our meeting, there were several topics that prompted some homework on our part. The first was the unexpected announcement of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar shortage in the technology budget and the resulting decision to move the smart boards from the current facility to the new campus. The second issue identified in the meeting is the difference in the number of classrooms at the existing location as compared to the new campus. It appears that the decision to combine classroom space and laboratory space into one room for biology, chemistry, and physics has created a shortage in classrooms. In an effort to address this issue during the meeting, the decision was made to convert a teacher workroom into a classroom. According to Tim Handy, the estimated cost of adding additional classroom is approximately a hundred thousand dollars per classroom. We are requesting a commitment from the Montgomery Public Schools that the approximately ninety thousand dollars in savings that resulted from changes in the final furniture choices will be earmarked and held in abeyance for the potential construction of additional classroom space. As we have discussed, Lamb Whinders wants both the exterior and the interior of the new Lamb campus to be a showcase for the Montgomery Public School system, to be reflective of the national rankings that have been earned by the Lamb students, and to be capable of sustaining Lamb faculty needs well into the future. Ensuring an adequate number of classrooms upon occupancy is a significant part of this goal. Um, in addition, I would just like to add that we are asking you to reinstate the technology funds and to finish out the three additional classrooms. and to finish out the three additional classrooms. And as you can see, there are plenty of students out there who would love to see us be able to actually add students to the number of students that we have currently. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of the citizens, as well as the scheduled public comments. Next item on the agenda, executive session, potential impending litigation, real property.
Mr. President, I believe that we go into executive session for potential pending litigation and real property.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second that we go into executive session, potential pending litigation and real property. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor.
If you're just, uh, Tommy, um, is there a length? And is there a vote expected at the end of our session?
Yes, from the record, I just certified that we are going into executive session for, uh, potential pending litigation and real property that will be, though, coming out.
But how?
I originally thought we would be in about twenty or twenty-five minutes, but I think we're gonna end up in, um, we should be at about.
Twenty minutes.
About twenty minutes.
All right, so about forty minutes. I, we'll have about ten to fifteen minutes of litigation going through, um, some issues and about twenty minutes with the real property.
Do we need to take anything from our package?
Yes. Take, uh, well, no, I'll have handouts for my section and he has his own.
Oh, do you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Those who are in favor, let's see by show of hands. Uh, it's unanimous. All right, we're back. Executive session, yeah.
Um, I recommend that the board would give, uh, the superintendent permission to examine options for the disposal of property discussed in executive session.
Mr. President, I believe that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. A second.
It has been moved in promptly second that we, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendation on the, um, I guess, options, options for profit. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see by show of hands. It is unanimous.
I recommend approval of the settlement agreements as discussed in executive session.
Mr. President, I believe that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to accept the settlement recommendations by the terms.
Second.
It has been moved in promptly second that we, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendation on the settlement agreements. Is there any discussion? I didn't hear none. Those who are in favor, let's see by show of hands. Again, it's unanimous. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report.
And I'm following instructions. You have a copy of my superintendent's report.
And they can all read.
Let me just say, though, if I may. Okay, thank you. I want to just make acknowledgements again, uh, this evening of the school board, staff, and community. And to any parents and community members that participated in the scheduled public comments, that we appreciate the concern and desire to work with us. We're going to continue to be active in our desire to, um, forge, uh, solutions. And, uh, that's what we're going to be working for. I also want to publicly commend for Lisa Dodson, who, um, led the Engage Me event with Office Depot. It was pretty fantastic. Uh, almost two hundred students and parents, uh, attended that event on that Saturday. And I have some, an attachment that you can look at that, uh, shows comments from those parents that were in attendance. Also want to commend Katrina Johnson and her staff for a fantastic Special Olympics event that was held at Carver. Um, last week, it was very well organized and the kids had great fun. We had community participation. It was an awesome event. I'm just going to, uh, give you the topics of the goal, the activities that are under each of the goals or the strategic plan. Uh, the first is regarding testing. And if you'll read specifically the highlighted pieces, you will see, um, some of the things that are going on. You know, April is testing month. And, uh, it won't conclude until May one. You'll see some of the things that are going on as part of that testing process. Under goal two, ensuring, uh, that education professionals are prepared, um, the Office of Learning Supports has been carrying on a series of PD for teachers. And I just wanted you to see the next session that's going to be held on Thursday with the topic of handling student behavior when spring has sprung. So, uh, we are sure that we'll have some, lots of teacher participation with that. I also wanted to share with you the positions of the people and the schools and departments of the new AUM Leadership Academy. Um, we have from first grade teachers all the way up through education specialists from our central offices that are a part of this. I didn't give names, I just wanted you to see the positions. On goal three, I wanted you to see a preliminary of the summer sessions that are planned for both elementary and secondary students. Uh, you'll see the summer program project or initiative. You'll see that we're serving meals with all of those events. You'll see the grade levels. And you'll see the purpose behind that event, whether it be promotion, acceleration, intervention, or enrichment. And then finally, uh, on goal four, engaging parents and community. Um, I know you remember the A three F report card and the fact that it had multiple components. One component that we didn't have to respond to last, uh, year or this year was the program review. We are going to have to respond to that in seventeen eighteen, which is a good thing. The implementation suggests that if you have a school without a grade twelve, you have to improve the school to home, home to school engagement. So we are obligated, the all-school systems in Alabama, are having to come up with plans for engagement in schools without grade twelve. That's home to school engagement. If, uh, it's a school with a grade twelve, which would be all of our high schools, then the engagement is for students. So we are obligated to, uh, have every student assigned to an adult advocate and/or to participate in some extracurricular activity. So we have, uh, I asked Camille Finley and for Lisa Dodson to head the district's planning committee. Uh, I gave them Mr. Portfield's name because he has great interest in the home to school engagement piece and anyone else that would want to work on that. We also solicited the support of the AUM Leadership Academy. Those people that, those positions that I just shared with you. They have to do a project every year. So I asked them if they would focus on those two pieces, uh, with constructing their project. And in a nutshell, those are the items. And you can read the rest of that.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. I think you did a very fine job of going through that.
All right, thank you.
Next item, receiving information on the nine A, the ASU Academe graduation contract, Mr. Donald Dodson.
Madam President.
So many ladies.
Come on, put your glasses on, Mr. Dodson.
You should have received in your pack the, uh, two thousand seventeen graduation contract from ASU. Uh, I do want to point out, there are a couple of changes. If you look at it, it's in the past. If you go to page three, the things that they listed that A, that Montgomery Public Schools agrees to, these are things that we've already, we've done every year. Then they've incorporated into the, uh, into the agreement. But we, this is nothing new. Now, also, the price did go up, the cost did go up, two thousand dollars. That was for fire marshals. Uh, if you've known, in some of our graduations, I think Jeff Davis and Lee in Carver, we had problems. And so they had to hire extra fire marshals. But that's a cost that we incurred, that's a cost of actually utilizing the building. And this year will be the first year that we'll be utilizing tickets as well, uh, for the graduations at the Academy. Now, we do have this, I think, attorney person. There are some things that need, that need to work out. So I think you wanted to do a resolution or we'll pick from.
Yes.
And Ms. Rula.
He did all the work.
Um, so we have a resolution. The resolution is to give the superintendent authorization to continue to negotiate the contract. Uh, you mean, like I said, the provisions that I'm negotiating are very minor. They're not major terms, they're not price, location, uh, terms and that kind of stuff. It's just some little technical things that we normally have in there. We have to make some adjustments. I've made contact with their lawyer and hopefully we can have it done.
And as you know, graduations are next month. And so we want to go ahead and get this approved. At that point, we want to be able to move forward.
This, this, BTW will be changed in their site this year. I thought they would.
BTW is same place.
They are.
We're just doing the five traditional at the Academy.
BTW is in Fraser.
Yes, they're going to Fraser. I have, I have that, but I thought they were at the first. They were last year, Ms. Bryers. Yeah, I didn't think, I was crazy. So I might think of last one now.
Well, you all read.
Mr. Dodson, I have a question. This may not be appropriate given the background, but is there a way that we can work out? We don't feel good right now. But I could not get two-part crossings regulation last year with security and all the traffic. Can you help us later know exactly where to enter?
Yes, ma'am, we will. You all should be entering, if you go to page three, that's where we have our security and the east lower door, lower entry parking in the east lower parking lot.
Yeah, that's where. It's reserved for us.
Exactly, right. You should have a.
I just couldn't get there. I couldn't get to it. I, I went all around.
Oh, okay. So we can get a diagram on how to get onto camp.
I, I think I need some kind of special badge or something on my car that says, "I'm not making this up."
The security is, is at the corner of Paul.
Okay.
And the right turn into that parking area. And does not let, want to let us in.
They would not let me in.
I don't care what kind of badge or pass or.
We'll handle, we can handle that.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Sure we can.
All right, Mr. Dodson, you go again.
We should have, uh, update on the building projects. Right, phase three. I'm gonna have Mr. Upchurch come in.
No, no, no. First of all, I'm sorry, you go to the lamp locals.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Monson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank y'all for allowing me to come speak this morning, or excuse me, this evening. What I'm passing out to y'all is a proposed logo change, uh, for Lamp. And I kind of want to give you the backstory of this. Uh, when y'all hired me this summer and I first came into Lamp, I quickly realized through discussion with parent groups, students, and faculty that we had no consistent, specific brand for the school. That often the school would use an academic seal, which is commonly associated with a diploma, on marketing materials, on letterhead. And our athletics logos were all over the place, which did not give us a consistent brand in the community and did not present us in a manner that we want to present ourselves. We were not able to put our best foot forward. Uh, I was contacted through one of our parents, uh, in Stamp Media to enter their Create-a-Thon project. We entered, we were selected and won. And this is the work that Stamp has created for us to give us that consistent branding, which we so desperately seek, not only for our athletic teams, but our academic programs, and also our general, uh, marketing materials. Letterhead, signage, car stickers for the community. As I'm sure you're all aware, every car in Montgomery has a sticker. Everybody identifies where they go with that sticker. So as you look at those, the top logo would be an executive-style letterhead. Our most private, our most fancy. That could even eventually wind up on a diploma if we choose to add it to or in conjunction with our academic seal. The middle logo is an everyday-use marketing materials signage. And the bottom would be the logo for our athletic teams and facilities. The interesting thing about the logo to me is the idea of the shield. The shield is present in every form of the logo. That speaks to Lamp's tradition, the tradition of excellence. It's very heralded, the idea of the shield being a harboring institution. An institution harbors excellence and greatness. So that's why we chose the shield to be our background. Another nod to the tradition at is Lamp. We did not change our color scheme and we maintained that, that link to the community and to the loveless school and the loveless name by preserving the golden tigers. So what we did is we, we basically solidified it, updated it. And now, the great part is, is that if, with your blessing, we own this. This is ours. It is created for us by Stamp, copyrighted. No one else will have it, no one else can use it. And they would give us a design style manual as well to create that consistent, solidified brand that we feel, and I say we because this has been voted by our students, our parents, and our faculty. We feel like this is something that can identify with the school for the next fifty-plus years. We feel very passionately about it. This has been many, many weeks and discussions and hard work over the stamp, student groups, faculty groups. I let Ms. Allen see a sneak peek. And she even gave me some really good feedback, too. So I would just ask that y'all approve, y'all would approve that so we can move on. My goal is seeking the immediate approval and blessing is we want to get this out to our kids. I would love to be able to give them a moment to, for them to leave this year to get them fired up for next year. We move to the new building, this is there, too.
Absolutely. Looks good. Oh, yeah, wonderful.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Dodson, we, the update on building projects. Mr. Dodson and Mr. Ken Upchurch.
What we're going to do, I know that Mr. Upchurch updated on page three, which are the three projects that we have, uh, Impact, Park Crossing Edition, and Love Lamp. And then following that, I will come back with information regarding, uh, plan for BTW and Poison Mountain.
And I think Mr. Dodson left out that I understand there are a lot of questions to be answered about Lamp. And I will make myself available to answer those. All right, so, uh, Park Crossing is complete, closed out. Final change order, all bills paid, it's done. Impact is in the final stages of closeout. Construction is complete. Only some minor paperwork, uh, needs to be done. There may be a final change order in about twenty thousand dollar range. We're still negotiating on that. But it's finished other than the final paperwork. Lamp, uh, the contract completion date is June the twenty-second. The contractor is owed about ten days for the time of, for some of the changes that MPS requested. He has not asked for those ten days yet. So we're still tracking the June twenty-second. But even with the ten days, it's the July fifth completion, which gives us plenty of time to let the staff and the administration move in and, uh, get acclimated before they have to open school. We have, we have a scheduling meeting, uh, on Thursday of this week to, uh, work with the contractor and the various furniture and vendors to coordinate their response times, what's gonna be available when, et cetera, et cetera, which is, is, is normal. The furniture, the IT, the fixtures, all of that's being finalized. The purchase order will be issued in the next, uh, two weeks by the MPS. Uh, all of the delivery dates meet the timelines. And so, uh, there should be no issues with that. The one issue that is at Lamp relative to construction is, uh, early in the process, we'd hope have onsite registration for the project, I mean, for the school, at the school. Uh, that's not gonna be early enough with that June twenty-second completion date. So just like we did for Impact, uh, uh, Mr. Dodson is working on where that early registration will take place. But it will not be at this school. All right, so, uh, any questions about that so far?
Do we need early registration for him? I don't understand.
Basically, it's a, it's a summer operation. See, we had hoped to be, move in in May so that he could operate out of the, that summer, out of the new building. That will not suffice. So we'll be moving, putting things in at that place. So we probably won't be in situated as we thought, you know, first of, last of May, first of June.
Mr. President, my question is about the teachers. Um, given that, it seems like the move-in date or completion date is July the fifth. Am I correct?
Well, it could be that. We haven't granted that. Right now, it's June forty-second.
Okay, so you're looking at June twenty-second as the move-in date. Okay, and this would really go to Mr. Dodson. How will the move for the teachers be coordinated? Because I know they're leaving the school, going to set up another school. So what's that gonna look like for them? How much help will they have?
Excuse me, normally with that, and we've, we've gotten to the old hat at this. We've done it several times. What we do basically is we work, we contract with a moving company. We get with the principal, the principal get with the teachers. They box exactly what they're going to take prior to leaving. They, he, the principal will go ahead and identify on the floor plan. they box exactly what they're going to take prior to leaving, they, he go, he, the principal will go ahead and identify on the floor plan, where teacher A, where teacher in room twelve, at the current facility, where she's going to be in the new facility, they put that room number on, and we move everything in at that point. Because it's a new building, all the furniture and fixtures will already be in place, they'll move their belongings in there, and normally, they will get everything in prior to, uh, the building commission allowing us to occupy it, so their, their, uh, belongings and those kinds of things then will already be in place before they can occupy, so let me just go in.
I just ask because I know that they're probably planning vacations, and anytime you have to move, it makes, puts a frown on your face.
And talk with Mr. Dotson, we're hoping to have all that, when they, they leave for the summer, we're hoping to have everything packed up so we can be ready to move soon.
Okay. Mr. Upchurch.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna confess to you that I walked through that building today.
Okay.
And, um, do you believe, I know you've been in construction for a long time, do you really believe that it's gonna be finished by June twenty second?
I do, I do. It will be.
I, I hope so, I'd probably find Mr. Hutchinson and say, John?
That's what Thursday's meeting's about.
Okay, I'm worried, I mean, I'm just.
Well, I will, I will tell you that, uh, last summer, we opened, uh, six high schools around the state, four middle schools. Uh, every one of them gives you some concern, uh, but they all opened on time, and this one went too.
Look, I can also add, last summer, I was worried about Impact.
Right.
But we, we made it right on time, because when we looked at it, it was some of the same things we saw, you, you would see now, but they went to the bank, so we're comfortable.
I just, I don't wanna have a repeat of that though, because that was too, that was too close.
That's correct, that's correct.
It was unacceptable.
No, no question about it, every, everybody knew that one was gonna be close, and if you remember this board, this board wisely said, we don't wanna repeat that and try to jam Lamp in.
Right.
And, and allow more time for design, more time for all of those sort of things. And, uh, so you're gonna have a full month and a half to move in a building, when most people have two weeks.
Okay.
The answer to your question is yes, and if it's not, I'll be right back down here and take my medicine. Because if you remember, I go, listen, y'all heroes, and if somebody's a goat, it's me. All right, so, uh, program budget, if you remember, you have a thirty-three million dollar program budget for this, uh, set of projects. Uh, twenty-seven was paid by the city and county, six was put in, uh, by MPS out of their deferred maintenance account. The original budgets for each project were eleven million for Lamp, nine million for Impact, and thirteen million for Park Crossing. Thirty-three million. Park Crossing.
Excuse me.
Sir.
Uh, and, and, and also as a part of that, am I correct to say that that was a million for Lanier?
Not part of the thirty-three million, Mr. Dotson, what you're remembering is that there was roughly, uh, ten million dollars that MPS had from on issue re-generations of other, other funds, you had about ten million. And you made a decision to apply six to the building program, and four for, for deferred maintenance on Lanier, Jeff Davis, other schools. So, so that's, that was the decision, it might have been ten point two or something like that.
But the reason I'm asking is because that project, the Lanier, I've heard about the, um, you started Park Crossing, uh, Impact, and did Lamp, but I didn't hear anything about where we are with the Lanier project.
Well, I'll let Mr. Dotson identify that, we're not involved in those projects, we're involved in the thirty-three million.
He can tell me, Mr. Dotson.
Yes, sir, we are, if you recall, we probably started on bathroom project, uh, you do have that bid, we actually had it in two phases. Uh, first phase, we're actually letting, and we're actually ink, uh, starting right now, uh, hopefully to be finished within the next couple of months, but we're actually going ahead and, uh, refurbishing all the bathrooms.
So that should be completed by the summer too.
Right, we're hoping to have that taken care of, then the next phase, we'll begin to look at sunroof later.
Okay.
But, but it's thirty-three million. Park Crossing went first, because it was really already pre-designed and went ahead. When the, when the design was complete, when the project was bid, we, we were able to reduce that budget without cutting other than a gym, a practice gym, uh, anything from their needs list, we did cut a few wants, but we readjusted that budget to ten million, five hundred thousand dollars.
So it's a safe from five hundred thousand?
Two million, five hundred, we reduced it from thirteen million to ten million, five hundred thousand.
Oh, ten, five?
Which freed up two and a half million dollars.
That's much, yeah.
Okay? That two and a half million dollars was reallocated, one point nine to Lamp, and six hundred to Impact, which changed Lamp's budget from eleven million to twelve million nine, and Impact's budget from nine million to nine million six. Additionally, because of AIDT, some city council gifts, and some other things, uh, there was a one point three million dollar addition to the thirty-three million dollar program that y'all approved. So the current program budget is thirty-four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And we met with Mr. Blubber in January and went through cost to date, cost to complete, this, this pro-, these, this thirty-three to thirty-four million dollar project is tracking on, on time and on schedule and on budget. So, the, the one point three million was allocated between Impact and Park Crossing, but are in those numbers that I gave you. The, uh, so as far as budget, and as far as, as progress, that's the end of my report, I'll entertain a question there.
Okay, well, uh, my understanding is we started out with thirty-three million total cost of project.
Yes, sir.
And, um, it's also my understanding that rather than thirteen million being placed at, um, was it Park Crossing? You did ten point five.
Yes, sir.
Which released, um, two point five.
Yes, sir.
You took one point five, added on to.
One point nine.
One point nine, added that to the Lamp, and the other, um.
Six hundred.
Six hundred thousand, yeah, that, well, how do we get to thirty-four thousand then? Well, I think thirty-four millions.
So.
But what happened to the, how do we get an increase of another million dollars in there?
Because you have added the following things to, to the project. You built out some of the technis- technical areas of original Park Crossing, the three hundred and forty thousand dollars that was not in the thirty-three million dollar program. Okay? Number two, you built dugouts and provided scoreboards at Park Crossing, uh, most of which was paid for by the city council. You had AIDT take space in Impact for three hundred and some thousand dollars.
So that's how the other million came in?
Yes, sir.
That was paid by some other guy?
It, it, it was either paid by somebody else, or it was taken out of your contingency account.
Yeah, I see.
Our, our program amount had dollars that, that you could use, and so you added those.
So the additional was taken care of by some other entities.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We're managing thirty-three million, that's what you hired us to, that's what our contract is.
That's why I wanted the, what the other million.
That's right, because when you start doing the math, you gotta account for that other one point three million. Thirty-three million is what our contract's based on, that's what we're managing too, as if it were our checkbook, not just yours. Uh, so any other questions on?
You know what I do? All right, first of all, the classroom structure, for I don't know how long we've had this building project, I have gone between you, Tim, and Mr. Dotson, and said, how many classrooms do we have?
Good.
Have at least the same number that we have where we currently are, and I have been assured, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. It's not fine, our board needs to know, most of us on this board, our former education majors or teachers, I don't understand how you can have four classroom teachers that you tell them that they have to float.
Okay, so let me give you the facts.
Because they're not floating now, that's the fact, they're not floating now.
But let me give you the facts.
Okay, give me the facts.
So, in September twenty-third of two thousand fourteen, when this program first started, Lamp School sent us a programming document.
Who'd gave you, who was the principal, man?
Mary George.
She asked for thirty-nine classrooms in certain administration pieces.
Okay, that's what we need, I agree.
Okay. And so that's what the design was started on.
Okay.
In December, December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, we received a new programming document that asked for thirty-five classrooms.
Why, why was that changed, Mr. Dotson?
Came from the administrat- school administration.
And was that changed administration?
Yes.
Yes, that's the problem.
Is Mr. Dotson here?
He wasn't.
Wasn't there?
Mr. Ford, but we have different principles of one year, and that's our problem.
So, so, let me, let me just finish.
You go ahead.
So, so, our, our design was changed to provide the thirty-five classrooms. And in January of twenty sixteen, we were told that we would prefer to have more flexible space, and the classroom count was reduced from thirty-five to twenty-eight. In March of sixteen, again, I can show you the numbers. In March of sixteen, we were told there was a mistake, they needed the thirty-five. So, we were about to go to bid, we did a bid ultimate to add ten classrooms, uh, office space, bathrooms, all of that, and we did it. The project came in as such that you accepted and approved a four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar change order to take it back up to the thirty-five classrooms. Additionally, to support the thirty-five, because we asked the question, why thirty-five instead of thirty-nine, we were given the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen master schedule matrix by term document, and there are thirty-five classrooms that are used full-time, almost six out of seven periods, when planning. The other spaces, which were language and something called student A, were the other four between, uh, and A might not be the right, that's just abbreviation on the, on the master schedule, were the other four. And they said, we don't need those, we have classes in language that have periods, and we have, we share with BTW, I think it was, German and something, and, and so, they justified us to the thirty-five, so we built the thirty-five, that's all we can do. Now, there's room for sixteen additional classrooms. The second thing is that, uh, is, I think it, this, the lamp butter, they did make last week, and, and there's a teaching space, collaborative space that could be possibly a classroom. Personally, I don't think that's a good solution, because that room has columns in it, it's odd shaped, it might work for a small group setting, but there are other places in the building that that could be used as well. She's right, we told her that roughly a hundred thousand per classroom, if you build more, it costs you a little less, if you build one or two, it's gonna cost you a little more, just because it involves air conditioning, code, code requirements, and all of that sort of stuff. So, there's been a lot of talk about those classrooms, but the documentation shows that MPS, site administration, made the decisions, and the architect gave what he was told to do.
And now, whose name was on this order, or whatever you talked about?
I'm not supposed to name names.
Oh, oh, I mean, it, okay, all right.
I may not go finishing that.
May I ask another question, Mr. President? Um, the next thing is, you know, um, in our citizens' comments, and we received a letter tonight about the technology fee, our technology has been cut, why was that cut?
First of all, it was never cut. The original budget that was built to fund the thirty-three million, and funded at eleven million prior to that one point nine being added, the, uh, Houston Hills had just been done, and the smart boards were bought for with that, and that, we were told that they would be moved, so they were never budgeted, they were never cut, because they were never in the budget. Now, if you wanna take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or whatever, and, and say where the money's coming from, we have no problem doing that, but we're managing about thirty-three million dollar budget that was approved by y'all, and, and it was line item, and the telephone and IT budget was about a hundred thousand dollars. We're buying it without the smart boards for a hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we're hitting our budgets, it was never in the budget because it was gonna be moved. You didn't know what you were gonna do with Houston Hills going forward, and you weren't gonna leave a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of one and a half year olds' smart boards back.
But what are they, brand new smart boards?
Most of them were, yes.
Most of them are?
Right, most of them were, we did buy them, we transferred some from Lamp, but we didn't buy them.
I don't like the number, please, not, not, I know you can't get that information, but I wanna see that, please. The next item that I have, um, regarding that is, um, well, I, somebody, I don't know, I lost my train of thought.
That's all right, give them a call tomorrow, Melissa.
So, so, some of the ones, some of the other ones that I've heard.
Yeah, well, he's gonna maybe work first.
From you and, and probably because, uh, irrigation.
Yes.
Uh, since two thousand and seven, when we first started working PMS, there's been no irrigation systems put in any of your projects, uh, except for, uh, Park Crossing, which was paid for by the booster.
Correct.
Irrigation systems haven't been budgeted in any project, y'all done three hundred and seventy million dollars worth of work, no irrigation system. That was told us, and we've honored that, so irrigation has been paid for by boosters, when it's gonna put in. Uh, most of the downwinding carver, that field's watered by hoses and.
Right, we didn't get one either, they had cars.
No, you didn't, because I remember you were one.
Oh, yeah, I had a problem with that.
Last time. Uh, Melissa, there were, there were some others, uh, baseball, softball, dugouts.
That was getting on, Mr. Jackson, right at Park Crossing.
The, the school standard is chain link dugouts, just like every school has, with the exception of Park Crossing, which city council discretionary funds gave a hundred thousand. Uh, sports lighting, uh, no school other than Carver has lighting on this athletic field, and Carver had theirs paid for by boosters.
Okay, I remember my question.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you mind? So, what about, um, I, I don't know, I keep listening, I'm listening.
Well, that's all right, you can call them on the program, Melissa, it'll be all right.
Well, the technology, what else, okay, so that, that really concerns me, um, the classroom size, let me ask you this.
The classroom count.
Classroom count, the classroom. The other thing that I have concern, or the question for you about is, if you've got intake right around the corner, is there not a way that Mr. Hartman could come and work with you, and maybe give him a doubt some of their classrooms?
The problem is the Alabama Board of Maintenance has to address every modification for life safety and other things. You, you could have it worked done, but you're gonna have to submit the drawings or approval.
Isn't that a cause, isn't that additional cause to all that?
Well, Mr. Hartman.
But they started out with thirty-nine classrooms, and we're down to thirty-five, and we're talking about bringing more students into our, uh, Lamp program, I mean, I don't know where the thirty-nine, where it dropped from thirty-nine to thirty-five in the first place.
Well, they said that they changed order for me.
I realize that, Robert, but, I mean, you've had a changeover in, in, uh, principals and administration, superintendents and all of that, and I just, I, in this day and time, I don't see teachers having to float, um, I, I would just, I mean, the technology part and the classroom part, I have a problem with that, so.
And come on, you're wrong with two.
Well, can they float until we get enough money to do what needs to be done?
Sir, the other part is the furniture, when we, when y'all met last week, why was there a furniture budget for eight hundred students for that school?
No, that's, there's not a furniture budget for eight hundred students, there were eight hundred desks bought for that school, because you have some classes that have ten in them.
Right.
I believe classes that have, Mr. Dotson, what, thirty something?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Is our highest.
All right, so, so, you have to buy the desk for, for the maximum number of classes in a particular room based on the master, master schedule, so that's why eight hundred desks were bought. Here's the simple math, there are four hundred and ninety-six students at Lamp today, there are thirty-five classrooms plus a couple of flex buses. That's four, that's an average of fourteen students per classroom, that is the lowest occupancy of any school you have in the district.
Fourteen to the class?
Okay.
You gotta be kidding.
You know, you can move your numbers around, but, I mean, come on.
Right, it, it is, it, it. Right. It, it is, it, it is a scheduling issue that we vetted when we got to thirty-five. And it made sense. And that was the administration, and that's what we went to bid. If, if all classrooms needed to be added, there were only sixteen of them. You can put them in. You just gotta tell us where the money's coming from, because we're managing to the thirty-three million dollars. We're not, we don't care. What, what we care about is, we wanna come back to you and say, you trusted us with thirty-three million dollars, and we're gonna give you what you wanted for that thirty-three million dollars. Now, at the time, you wanted thirty-five classrooms. Now, you want thirty, suddenly you're thirty-nine.
Well, from my understanding, it's changed three or four times now, and we're talking about getting to an end of, 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 completed project. And at this point in time, don't you think it's a bit premature here to talk about doing anything other than what's already in plan to be done?
Other than.
I think there's been a lack of communication with this board. I don't think this board has been privy to the changes, and I'm, I'm very upset about that. I'm not blaming anybody, but I think that's, I mean, clearly, the communication is the issue. We have somebody that, I don't know, well, I guess she still is employed with us somewhere, but, man, she, she's dropped the ball, and now we're stuck, and we're four classrooms short, and we're, and what, April, halfway through April, and we're trying to get these students moved in this building by summer, and we're short classrooms. Mr. Portfield, would you want people, if you needed to float?
Well, I tell you what, I did it for a while. But, uh, you know, uh, the, the, the point here is, and, and my concern is, you say, well, the, the changes were made, you have thirty-five, and the capacity of the school is about how many?
Six hundred.
Six hundred. So, you have an enrollment of how many?
Four ninety-six.
Four ninety-six. So, with four ninety-six, and you've got a capacity of a six hundred, I don't see reason why anybody would need to float.
Well, there is, there is issues in, in class scheduling. There's no question about that.
Because I, I would think that, that with, with the amount of spaces and the number of students, that something can be done with respect to the scheduling to accommodate every child and every teacher.
One of the reasons that there was discussion at the twenty-eight classroom level is that more schools are going to a college-type floating schedule in order to right-size their schools, because they have to operate the square footage. That conversation was had, and that's the way we were hit. We didn't have the conversation. The school administration had this conversation. Mr. Dotson was in those meetings. I don't know, the superintendent Allen was in a lot of them. I mean, there's, the, the, the communication, and I take exception to that, Melissa, is that we, in our contract, says that we report to Mr. Dotson's office. And that's what we've done. And, and there has been more scrutiny on this project, as you can imagine, than anything I've ever been involved with in any other cities.
My lord.
And the,
My lord.
The decision to move from twenty-eight to thirty-five, or whatever those numbers are, was the right decision, because the administration was not having success in dispensing a new way of collaborative education with its faculty. And you would have had a really hard fight tonight if you only had twenty-eight classrooms.
You agree.
And, and so, uh, I don't know what we could have done differently. But I would say, Mr. Portfield, if you're thinking about doing additional classrooms, right now is probably the most economical time to do it, because you've got all the trades on the job. You're under a building commission, uh, permit right now, and you wouldn't have to start the process from scratch, so.
Mr. Upchurch.
But you gotta have the money.
I don't think that I'm blaming you for the lack of communication, because I, I mean, for the record or whatever, I want everybody to know, I'm not blaming you for that. But what I am saying is, there has been a lack of communication, and our board has not been told. Explain. I, I've been given the answer of, it's okay, it's all good, it's all good. No, it's not good, and I appreciate that you came tonight. Mark, Ms. Allen, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda, because I think we're at a crunch time, like you said, where we can fix this.
Well, you can't fix it by January twenty-second, but you probably could before school started. Give the dollars or.
Let me get a quick clarification if I may. The meetings that we had determining the classrooms, the classroom sizes, the number of classrooms, if you recall, Ms. Allen, we went to the first two meetings with the principal, the assistant principal, and staff. We went to two meetings at that point, and they began to work it out with Mr. Upchurch and his staff. After that, the principal and the assistant principal at that time, and the staff worked with, continued to work with Mr. Upchurch weekly to determine what they needed, hence, they had these particular, this is what they could work with, and that's why we indicated we had what we thought we needed, because it was coming from the principal and the staff at the school at that time. They all had input.
And they all signed off on it. We've got their initials on the, on the drawings.
And right.
Here's, here's the other thing, Melissa.
The trust is that the people with the initials on there aren't you. Okay, that's, that's, I mean.
Alright, so.
Well, I thought that, at, at the time, that the people were to be involved in terms of determining their needs.
They were.
And if they gave you all a list of their needs, and you completed the project with respect to their needs, then why, what are we discussing now?
Well, let me, let me, let me add one other.
Well, once again, let me just say, we're at a point of where we need solutions, because we have identified the problem over and over and over. So, we need solutions. So, uh, this board has received what you presented, received what you've said, Mr. Dotson, and we know what we have to do if we wanna change anything. So, this board needs to continue to have that conversation and, uh, take a look at the budget, uh, and see what, if anything, can be done about it. And I, I think that's, that's probably where we are tonight.
Absolutely.
Well, Mr., Mr. President, excuse me, will we have a work session to do it, because that's the only way, honestly, you know, we will have an opportunity to sit down and come up with the solutions. We always say we need to do this, and we need to that, but we need to have work sessions to get to the bottom of all these issues, so I would like to, or request or consider just a work session, Mr. President.
Okay.
And, and I'd like to add to that, in, um, Jason Taylor started yesterday, and he's getting ready to do this financial audit. So, it would be able to show us what we have where. And, um, I think that as, after he does his audit and brings that information to us, Ms. Smith, we need to sit, just like you indicated, and take a look at where we are and what our priorities are going to be.
And, and I, I have one more thing. This is for Mr. Dotson before you. I have an elementary school that has made a request. Dambler Elementary would love a paid parking lot. It is pretty rough on that parking lot. The city uses it for trash, so I don't know if.
City might help.
Yeah, I just wanna know how we can help them, so that they're gonna be a smooth ride in the parking lot.
We're actually working with the city. We've actually been out, they wanna do part of it, we do part of it, we've kinda worked that out, because they, if you notice the park in that, the city wants to improve that as well, so we're talking about paying all that. We've been out to look at it.
And Monroe Elementary as well.
I'd like to make one comment, if I could. That, you know, it, this is just, you know, sometimes we talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. And when we look at what we've done already today, we had a, a young student, Claire, get, I don't remember her last name, but she got up, and we had all the heart, and we had all these letters. And, and here's, you know, we commended her for what she did, and we needed that, it was, we need that room. And you just said that it would be most economical to us, because we have permits and everything like that. So, I'm hoping that the board hears this and, and looks at, you know, you know, out here at Montgomery Mall, there is so much potential for our city with Montgomery Mall, with not only LAMP, but other things, that I hope that this board's gonna listen to.
I mean, y'all made a, y'all made a twenty seven million dollar investment out there. No, twenty-three million dollar investment out there.
And, and last, and this is not a complaint, but I think sometimes we give too much authority to, to principals, and I'm not saying, you know, I think once these principals make a decision, because obviously, the disconnect was we switched principals, and it never did get run by us for us to go, to put our stamp on it, because I think a principal that would take you down to twenty-eight schools, there's not a person on this board up here that would have, or, sorry, twenty-eight classrooms, that would have said, wait, we, we would have all put a big red flag up and went, wait a minute, we already have overloaded classrooms. And see, what you're telling us is sixteen, and it's just.
Sixteen extras.
Mr. Portfield.
Sixteen extra, four short.
Mr. Portfield.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that, um, we suspend the rules, because I noticed on our agenda, on the receivers' information, we have the LAMP logo changed. Could we suspend the rules and move that, um, for consider for approval tonight, with anybody else?
But, is that on there for a consider for approval?
It's not on there, but I was gonna suggest that we make it, uh, eleven E.
Well, I move that we suspend the rules and, and add eleven E and, um, to consider for approval with the LAMP logo change, please.
Second.
Okay, as it moved in second, that we, uh, moved to, uh, consider for approval, the LAMP logo change, uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Well, those who are in favor of, of approving the LAMP logo change, let's see, by a short pass.
That's adding it to the agenda.
No, we add it to the consider for approval.
Thank you.
That's just to add it there. Uh, thank you for your presentation, and Mr. Donald Dotson, Mr. Upchurch.
We got no piece.
Another piece.
Hi, thank you. You know I'm not a customer. You, I love you.
I did want to, uh, thank you for you all. Okay, okay, we wanted to, we had an option for both BTW and Floyd Middle Magnet. As you know, those are two buildings that we are looking at as far as moving out of them, trying to find another location for BTW is what is brought to your agenda. We have talked about several options. What I'd like to look at, you hear, you do have in front of you, I have it up here, is the Houston Hill property. What I would enlist, uh, that you allow the superintendent for me to go ahead and do a feasibility study with an architect. I have had the conversation, I've got quotes. Uh, I do have one architect who actually worked on the building, getting it ready for Loveless. Uh, his cost is fifteen thousand dollars, but that would actually go into the design, part of the design, if he actually does the design phase. What we wanna do here, this right here is Hall Street. That's the school. Right there is where you have the, uh, modular building. And of course, that's the parking lot that's here. We had originally talked about, and I think I took, and I took, uh, Dr. Starks over, and we looked at going here in this end to build, uh, the auditorium, as well as a, as well as a art classroom. We would actually take the parking lot here, and if you recall, when we moved LAMP, the city didn't want us to take the parking lot, although it's on our pro, not the parking lot, but the basketball goal, because it's on our property, and they said it had the community. So, to work with them, we decided to park back here. But that is our property, and we, you know, we can utilize that if we feel it's best for what we want. However, I did go over today, here's the tree line. Our property goes deep behind the tree line here. You could actually go ahead at this point, and because it's a slope grade here, and there's a slope grade here, which is perfect for an auditorium. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, some time ago, you were actually going to add a split level addition right here, years ago. Because it's, you can actually do that. So, you would actually go ahead and put your, I wanna look at the feasibility, of actually putting the auditorium and the classrooms, and the art classrooms here. You wouldn't have to do anything to the building property, because that's already been taken care of with LAMP. So, that's the academic piece that she needs. I've actually had Dr. Starks over, and we've looked at that piece. That'll work for her from the academic side, because her numbers are considerably the same as LAMP. Here, you would actually go ahead and do the arts piece and the auditorium piece. We're thinking maybe, once we do the feasibility study, I'm looking at that coming in at maybe fifteen, sixteen million. You have four million, and then you have the, you have four million for the, uh, for the, uh, auditorium already, and then you have the sale, which we had the property appraised at the current end at one point eight million. So, that would actually go into that, but that's an option I would like to look at, and I would like to go ahead at some point, probably come out to your next board meeting, that we have present to you, uh, a feasibility, a contract for a feasibility study with the architect to do that. But that's something that we wanna look at, uh, as an option for BTW.
Would you have the total bill out then, when you bring it back to us?
No, he's gonna do the feasibility study, then he'll come back.
Okay, with the total, oh, okay.
He'll say, yes, he can, this is for the blue line and have a price for that.
I see what you're saying.
But I do wanna look at that, because I think.
Absolutely. Sounds, sounds like.
And this is profit, and we are.
Already own, right, right.
Right, and, you know, as you know, we don't have, we, we're very short on money.
I know.
No, this is an option we can have utilizing. You'd actually take your fields, you move the, we can move the fields over to make parking here, so it's closer to the auditorium, what we have there. So, there's a lot of options here, because we own these twelve acres.
Oh, okay. How many acres over there?
Twelve.
Okay.
Twelve point seven, I believe, so we own that. So, that's just an option for BTW that I wanted to go ahead and just begin to explore.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, that's the church, yeah, that's the church right in here somewhere. Right over here, Philbrook Rest. That's the, uh, assisted living home here.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Yes, ma'am. Not far from, not far from your building, Paul.
El is not too far from you, is it?
Right. Where?
Keep going right there, what's that?
Oh, no, that's.
That might be El's building.
No, no, that's, uh, those kind of, uh, factories, not factories, but some workplaces, right on, uh, Madison.
Oh, going down that way.
Yeah, that's going, that's Madison right there. But again, I do want to go ahead and present that, we'll bring that on next week, we'll bring that, that on.
Okay.
Okay. And you have this for us at the.
Yes, ma'am, and I wanna break that. No, not, no, I'll have the contract to enlist the architect for the feasibility study at that time.
Right, okay, sounds good.
Now, the next step is Floyd Middle Magnet. We looked at Floyd Middle Magnet, and we know there are some issues there. We had talked about relocating Floyd Middle and, uh, demolishing it as a stay-in, and building a new elementary there. What we'd like to do at this point is, with the condition of Floyd Middle Magnet, is to go ahead and let's, again, basically do a feasibility as to where we can move it. I also want to go ahead at this point and look at what it would cost. If we say, okay, we're gonna leave Floyd Middle Magnet in the current location, what it's gonna cost to upgrade it to code? Because once we go ahead and start building, we're gonna have to upgrade the code. So, now, you're also looking, you're looking at roof issues, you're looking at window issues, you're looking at HVAC issues, you're looking at ceiling issues. There's a number of things over there. I wanna cost that out and compare it to the cost of if we move to another location. And so, I wanna present that to you, because there is an option that we may can do next year. You know, that we're gonna present to you based on the funds that we have.
Okay.
Save us some money.
If I could, if I could say this, though, I know you said it.
Is any funds going into the traditional schools?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, tell me about it, 'cause I've got it on a bleacher that rolls across the floor and everything else. Well, tell me about some money that's going into these traditional schools.
Well, uh, let, let, let me, let me just share this. I think the first thing he started out with were traditional schools with the name of Park Crossing. In terms of the work that was done there, and the money should respect that. Uh, as you already well, we've done a lot with a number of the traditional schools as far as, uh, building new traditional schools here in Montgomery. Now, certainly, we have a lot of old schools still in the, in the district. We have a number of old schools still in the district that need some repair work. And I think we've looked at this in terms of the priorities that, uh, was done by the department. And we're somewhat following what we had placed in terms of the plan, what we call copper project plans. And we'll just continue that process that we've had. Even when we go back and start looking at Carver, the car, the, all of that was a part of the, uh, uh, plans that we've continued to work on. It's just that we've gotten this point to the magnet program.
And we are looking at, uh, finishing up Jeff Davis HVAC. We are gonna get the releases this summer at Jeff Davis. We realize what the issue is there. We're gonna have a laugh. We're gonna finish Jeff Davis HVAC system. We're already working on the bathrooms at Lanier. So, there are several things that we have in the works.
You're all working on the bathrooms at Lanier?
Absolutely, that's right.
So, there's several things that we're doing as far as upgrades for our tradition as well, but it's just, there's only so much money going.
Right, and Phase One at Lanier should be finished this summer. You said.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I appreciate you, you know, bringing up options for our different schools, such as Floyd and BTW. Um, and I, I just thought it was interesting. I went to one of the things out of the train station with the art with BTW this last week. I also went to a health screening out there. And I made up these little surveys for students, and I collected like forty-five different students. And I had put in there, I, I, you know, I introduced myself and said, you know, if you could move this school, because I had a book of, uh, that I was given, that I think each of the. because I had a book of, uh, that I was given, that I think each of the board members up here was given, of, of, of how bad BTW looks. And I said, if you were, and the question said, if you were able to be moved, would you be, would you rather just have a new school, you know, as an option, I was just giving them, would you rather go to the mall? And, and, or would you just rather stay here and get this fixed up? I will tell you, ninety-eight percent of them wanted to go to the mall. And, and the reason why, I even asked, comments why. We asked about money, they were given four million dollars, okay? That, we spent the interest money on all these other things, like fixing up Carver and stuff like that, that's still there. And all I'm saying is, we, no, we think, I may be speaking wrong, but there's no reason that the Montgomery Mall cannot have, be an option. And I think all of us, you know, I, I just, nobody's saying to vote on that, but if we could just vote to explore it, that, to me, is something that this board can hang their hat on. And I, I just want to, to, to make a motion that we explore that option of looking at Montgomery Mall.
Dr. Keith, again, let me, let me, let me answer if I may. My, my position and my job is to present to you the best options based on the money that you have. Okay, and then you can, you know, you all can move from there, but that's what I have to get up, be on record as in presenting to you the best options based on the money that the finances also said that we have in copper projects.
I, and I have looked at that, we've been beaten up, uh, in the media and everywhere else concerned, going to the Montgomery Mall. I thought they were gonna shoot us one by one for going to the mall in the first place. And, and, uh, one of the talking heads here in the city said, why in the world would you go to the mall when you have all these buildings that you closed down, that you could have used? And we're talking about, uh, spending a lot of money that we really don't have. I am tired of spending money outside of what we have, just because we think it's a good idea. When are we gonna talk about reducing class size? When are we gonna talk about having the proper technology in school? We are just consuming most of our time talking about buildings, going to this place or that place. And, and, uh, from what I'm hearing about some of the things, BTW, I, I am definitely for the arts. I think they need somewhere, I taught school over there, and you know how long that's been, and the building was there then and being used. But I'm looking at the fact that we need to use what we have, save as much money as we can, do some of the, uh, infrastructure we need to do at other schools. I mean, we can't just say, I mean, I love my magnet programs, and I love my traditional schools, but we gotta start looking at saving money and not saying word about how elaborate something is gonna be. Those kids would be happy to be in a different building than where they have been for all these years. They have not complained in the past and all of that. I wish that we had done some other things. I know, if you put another school, and I'm looking, and I'm not an architect, and maybe Ken is here, he could address this. I'm looking at, you have Impact there, you have, we're gonna carry Lamp out there. You have the, uh, fire department out there, you have all these things out there. The problem's gonna be parking. Suppose the, uh, uh, Lamp wanna have a program at the same time, Elpack wants to have a program. Where are you gonna put the cars on top of each other? I mean, we got to stop letting people get into our heads, telling us this is what we need. If you want to do something for us, and you think we can go out to, to the mall or whatever, then write us a big check, we'll go wherever you want us to go, and you write the check. I mean, we got to start living within our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, we absolutely do.
All I asked was for us to explore it, and our mayor has asked, it said to us, all he needs us to do is ask him for the funds. Mister, we are only over twenty-nine schools right now. And I didn't say vote, I said, can we explore the option, that's all.
Uh, I think, uh, Donald, haven't you been exploring?
Let's go, are you done, Ms. Brown?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, let's, yeah, let's stick to, uh, uh, let's stick to the agenda, please. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, uh, financial update.
No, BTW.
Oh, sorry, BTW.
Twenty-seven of our traditional schools are relocating in our power.
Let's, um, stick to, uh, please let me, uh, continue. The, um, agenda is printed here. We receive as information BTW relocating to One Center. Presentation by Ms. Beverly Callaway and Shenee, uh, Shavano. Shavano, okay, Shavano.
Okay.
Madam Superintendent, President Porterfield, board, staff, and audience. Um, it is a pleasure to be with you again tonight, and, uh, what we were just discussing about Lamp High School at One Center is the perfect segue for discussing BTW at One Center. And what I'm going to point out are a couple of changes. I've made presentations to you, uh, on two other occasions, and, um, we have made, uh, further request of the, of, of the people at BTW, a couple of additions that you have in your, uh, in your folders, uh, to the site plan. I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Brummel, who is the architect that has designed all this. We have done a feasibility study, uh, for BTW at One Center. This is Mr. Warren Marshall with Marshall Design Bill. Uh, they have worked countless hours at no charge thus far, uh, for this project. And we have done feasibility, we, we have done a feasibility study, but the thing that is not included in your packet tonight that I need to point out is that the proposal I gave you from the Keith Corporation is no longer in effect. Uh, they are no longer under contract at the moment to buy One Center. Uh, the current owners, Blue Ridge Capital, is who we would deal with, uh, which is a good thing, because they are most anxious to do something with the remaining space at One Center. Um, I would think, because of your twenty-seven million dollar investment that this board has made at One Center, that you would be very concerned about who the other tenants will be at One Center. And if it's not, I have fought to keep it an education base. Um, it is a perfect blend to have BTW and Lamp at One Center. Um, Mr. Marshall and Mr. Brummel have done studies. We have got the cost in line with the low bid contractor, uh, that is building Lamp and Impact. You have construction cost in your packet, but we have no time tonight to talk about, uh, cost. What you don't have is the, is the cost of the, of the property. Because now, just tear up your, uh, proposal from the Keith Corporation, that is no longer in effect, and we would be dealing with Blue Ridge Capital, which is a good thing, because that's who you dealt with before, uh, to buy the, the property for Impact and the administrative offices and Lamp. So what we're asking is to do, just as Mr. Dodson is suggesting, do a feasibility study. Uh, One Center is another option for you, for BTW. Uh, we certainly think it makes plenty of sense. Ms. Briers, we have tons of parking at, at One Center. It was built for a retail mall that would have thousands of people at a time, uh, there together. If you were ever there during Christmas holidays shopping, you know how many cars were parked in the parking lot. We can have thousands of people there. The one thing, or the three things that are included that were not on your previous plan are a soccer field. BTW said they would like their own soccer field, we have plenty of room for a soccer field. Uh, they also wanted a basketball gymnasium, a full-size gymnasium, we have included that. Uh, and Mr. Marshall has broken down the cost, uh, per, um, you know, per facility, if you will. Uh, depending on the budget and how much you would want to spend, those could be done, you know, all at one time, or either added on later or whatever. But our point being, uh, we have twenty-three remaining acres, not twelve, but twenty-three, at One Center, uh, for another high school there. Um, you know, high schools are built typically on a minimum of twenty acres these days for approximately twenty-two hundred students. The good thing about this site plan for BTW at One Center is in the same footprint that you currently have at Houston Hill, I'm sorry, at BTW on South Union Street, is about ninety thousand square feet. But that space is not adequately used. Using the same footprint at One Center and using ninety-one thousand square feet, you could go from four hundred and sixty-six students to a thousand students. You could change your enrollment. Uh, Mr. Brummel has taken, uh, the, the regulations for classroom size, and we could increase the enrollment for four hundred and sixty-six students to at least a thousand students, um, because of the number of classrooms you could have, as well as a lot of other, um, space at, at One Center. So this is another option we want you to consider, and, uh, you know, of, I think we have two or three options. We'd love for you to do a feasibility study, it's like buying a house. If you found a house you liked, that you thought you might want to buy, you would get all the information you could on that piece of property before you made a decision. And that's all we're asking you to do.
Okay, I would suggest, Mr. President, that we look at all of this, we have two options. We have this option, and we have Houston Hill option. But, uh, what he, what Mr. Dodson does, his feasibility study, what I want to know is, at the end of the day, what is the drop dead number, the bottom line? Because I see a lot of things here with, with the various options that we have, but nothing was told, uh, to give us a, a total of what you, what you're gonna do. And I'm, I know with the structure being the way it is at One Center, those walls are gonna have to be torn out. Well, we see the prices for doing what you plan to do.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mary, I don't mean to cut across, but I'm already, I've already taken a look. You're looking at somewhat now in terms of what they're presenting to us, sixty-two point five million dollars, total with everything that they've listed.
And that does not include tearing down, because you can't go in and put it, put it in, um...
It's not sixty-two.
You're gonna have to expand the walls and stuff. But, but, what I'm saying, let's just take the two options, and the bottom line is, you know, we're, we're...
Wait a minute. Eleven point eight.
Okay, well, I, I agree with Mary in that we got two options, all we're trying to do is explore it. So I'd like to make a motion that I move, that, that I move the MPS Board to approve the formation of a committee formed by the Board of Friends of Arts Magnet Education, which is famed, to research and report back the fiscal, academic, and feasibility of moving BTW there. So if we could do that, and at least look at it as an option, that's all we're doing, and research it. And what Mary's asked, we want the bottom line figure to be able to compare, hey, this is what, this is what, uh, Mr. Dodson has, this is how many students it will help, and what, what y'all have, and how many students, and how much it's gonna cost us. Because that's, that's the bottom line.
Absolutely, and I'm about the same thing. I've got to know what the bottom line is always, and, um, and I don't even like change orders and all of that going forward. I like to know, when you select what you want, and it's input from everybody, we have the bottom line figure, and hopefully, and it's always very difficult, but hopefully, we can stick as close to that as possible. So, we, we will be happy to provide that, that's why we need to do a feasibility study. Uh, we, we can't determine that at a meeting like this in ten minutes, it's too big. It is a thirty-year project, we'll be dead and gone when it's, when that school is still operating. So this is not a short-term fix, this is a long-term fix, that will be our...
Dr. Keith, um, I don't mind your motion, but you've got to suspend the rules just to follow the lawless rules of the world. Um, so you're gonna need to ask to suspend the rules to add that, um, to consider for approval.
Could, okay, could we sus- suspend the rules and add that to like, after the one we suspended already tonight?
So that would need to be your motion first.
Okay, then I motion that we suspend the rules and add that as F under E, where we add the logo for, for, uh, Lamp, Lamp.
Um, Lisa, there was, there was one thing, um, you were talking about getting a committee and all of that. Can we just do the feasibility study the way we always do a feasibility study?
Well, that's, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm just glad that we can research it. And, and my thing is, as, in all fairness, that Mr. Dodson give us the same figures. He gives us a bottom line figure, a bottom line number of students that we're going to be housing, as well as what we had asked, uh, Ms. Callaway.
I, I think what we're looking at is a comparative analysis of both, what you've done and what they're doing. Uh, the thing is, we, we didn't have to give you authority to do a feasibility study. We certainly shouldn't be able to, uh, authority to give you, y'all do your feasibility study, and just bring it back to us, and we make a comparative analysis. While we got approval, you all do a feasibility study. Y'all just do a feasibility study, we do a feasibility study here, and we bring it together, and we make a comparative analysis.
I don't think that's what we're...
Of comparative cost, yeah. Compared to cost analysis.
And Mr. Dodson, would you handle that for us?
Yes, ma'am, but what I'm asking to do is to go ahead and list, and give the superintendent authority for me to enlist an architect, who will do a feasibility study after looking at the property and talking with the stu, with the pet, with the students, with whomever the principal says you want to talk with about what we're going to need, to see if those needs will fit in. That's all I'd like to do and bring back to you, to say, yes, this is doable, and this is how much it would cost, with the input from the faculty, staff, and the principal, and the students at the school.
Question, is it gonna cost for you to enlist an architect?
Fifteen thousand dollars, but the arch, the architect that we have, that will also go, be subtracted out of his design.
Okay, all right, as long as that's put in there, so we can compare the figures.
Have you, did you all consult with the administrators, teachers at BTW to see what the VTS are? And they gave you what, that's how you've come up with your design? Well, all we have...
I'd like to make the motion again that we explore the options to move BTW.
No, you, you, you guys suspend them?
I, I made the option to suspend the rules.
I'll say that.
Okay.
Uh, it has been moved and probably seconded, that we suspend the rules to add, um, BTW on the essays of the feasibility study. Is there any discussion?
We're ready for the questions.
Okay, ready for the questions, those who are in favor, raise your hands. So?
Okay.
Let's move the feasibility study.
We just add that to, um...
That would be F, I know, eleven, that would be eleven F.
All right, I'll take my two questions.
Um, I, Jeanne, you?
Well, I don't...
You think we're gonna get to where we're...
I'd just like to yield to Mrs. Jeanne Charbonneau with BTW just a moment. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
This meeting has run on, and we have covered a lot of really important topics, and I promise I won't drone on forever. Um, for those of you who don't know me personally, and I do know many of you already, my name is Jeanne Charbonneau, and I am a member of the Fame Board, and most importantly in this situation, I am the parent of two graduates of BTW, a two thousand seven graduate and a two thousand twelve graduate. And I've been on the Fame Board only since November, and I have been in the capacity of my job with the City of Montgomery. I spend a lot of time in Montgomery Public Schools. And I wanted to share with you very briefly that we are Montgomeryans by choice, our family. The Air Force brought us here, and we chose to stay here. And one of the, now, I would say the salient determining factor for why we remained in Montgomery was Montgomery Public Schools. And you don't see that press very much in this town, which is unfortunate. We could have gone anywhere after retirement, we had moved our children many, many times. They were in school, they were succeeding, they had strict academic standards, and the arts programs are unmatched anywhere. I am a huge advocate, and having been in the schools, having been over to Houston Hills, having been in many of the public and private schools, um, I will tell you that our way forward is to take a long view, a thirty-year view, if you will. And we know how to do these magnet schools right, and we do need to expand them. We don't need to build so that we can only translate the number of students that we can currently accommodate. We need to go ahead and, and there's, there's a movement afoot among several of our city councilmen. Um, board members have discussed this, um, we have a... We have a bright academic future in this town for economic development, for recruitment. I think it's absolutely visionary, and I think it's important for you to know as a member of the community and as a parent of graduates. My children are all out of Montgomery Public Schools, but Montgomery Public Schools are incredibly important to who I am and what I do, because I work with the Koreans that are here with the recruiting companies. And I am constantly talking education options. And convincing them that their future and their children are in good hands. They believe it, they know it, they understand it. But we can move forward with a really visionary education center that could end up being a model for the whole Southeast United States or the country. If we, I am just thrilled that everybody realizes that the BTW facility is in desperate need of repair or replacement. So that's, that's a giant step in the right direction. And I would just like to put in a community and parent plug that we really do need to explore all options and consider not just an auditorium, but a performing arts center. Those are two very different things. And the students at BTW and Baldwin and Carver, I mean, a performing arts center is something that those talented kids need and deserve. And this makes Montgomery special.
Ms. Charbonneau, we all agree with what you stated, and I think we're on the same page. It's just a matter of doing a feasibility study. And I think we're all on the same page with that. At this time, we have our financial update, Ms. Brenda Palmer.
Good evening, Superintendent Allen, Chairman...
Good evening, Ms. Palmer.
Hey, very nice. If you look at the... Here that we give it to you. If you all hungover in your packets. It's the financial statements that I'm going to give you for FY seventeen. I gave you several financial statements for the fiscal year October of seventeen through March seventeen. However, if you look at September, that is the last financial report that I gave you in our last budget meeting. And I had told you that we were in the process of closing out FY sixteen, that FY sixteen budget, as I communicated with the state today, is being approved and getting ready for our financial expenditure report to be done. On that last meeting, if you look at the September financial statement, if you look down at the bottom at the unreserved fund balance, when I gave you the September financial report in our last board meeting, we were at nine point nine as a unreserved fund balance. It has reduced because we told you that we had to go through and review. There were some encircuses and some purchase orders that were still open, that were, that had funds obligated but were never used, so those were voided and taken off. So right now, the financial report that I turned in to the state with our FY sixteen has changed to an unreserved fund balance of nine point six. However, we're still short of our one-month operating reserve fund balance. Right now, the state looked at what our September was instead of looking at where we are today in March. So right now, what they looked at, at sixteen, our normal operating reserve fund balance is nineteen million. So they said that we were off a little bit over three hundred. If you'll take October, November, December, and January, and I'd like for you to just review those. However, I'm just going to discuss September, our end-of-the-year closeout reserve fund balance. And if you look at the last page, it has an attachment to it of the notes to the financial statement. We're just going to discuss September through March. Right now, we're already halfway through the year. And so March is very important to see where we are now, because we know that school is closing in less than six or eight weeks. Audience, I'm sorry, I didn't have any extra copies. They will be uploaded to the MPS homepage. If you'll go to Finance and look up under Documents, I'll have it there in the next couple of days. If we look at September, like I told you again, what we looked at is that under the reserve fund balance for September, we had five million six, and then our unreserved went to nine point six. However, if you'll look at, go to the third, the fourth page for the March F one report. Uh, March four? March. We're going to compare September, our closing financial report, which was September, and now we're going to look at March, because we're already halfway through the year. However, I still included October all the way through February, so that you'll have time to review that. March, our reserve fund balance went to eleven million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven forty-five, twenty. That's because we've received in December, January, we received Appaloisean taxes, and that boosts us up. So I reserve fund balance goes up December and January. February through March, it starts trickling down. We've received ninety-six percent of our Appaloisean taxes. So where we are as of March is eleven million, two fourteen. However, that's the reserve fund balance, and our unreserved is seventeen million, three forty-five. Now, that seventeen million was still twinkle down, because this is what we're living off until the end of the school year. So let's keep in mind that it's consisting of encircuses again, and purchase orders and blankets that's used by our various departments. However, I've put them on a three-month blanket, so within that three months or before then, we go in, we view them. And I'm going to mark, because that is funds that's obligated but not used. So that is being monitored very closely. If you'll go to, back to the first page for March. I gave you a financial statement. This first page, on the first page, is the general fund. This is a total of all of our monies that we received. If you'll see your assets, your total liabilities, and your total fund equity versus your ending fund balance as of March thirty-first at the twenty-eight million, five sixty. And if you look to your right, your notation, it explains what each column represents. Are there any questions so far? And if you'll see the amount of money that we've received since October one sixteen, which was the beginning of the fiscal year, that is our total revenue and fund is a hundred and twenty-three million, five sixty for twenty eighty-two. And then you'll see up under how much we spent since ten one sixteen up until March thirty-first. The second page I gave you, if you'll turn that page, it's budget versus actual. When the seventeen budget was presented to you by our contract workers, if you'll look at the revenues, which was the budget, what they actually put into our seventeen budget that was submitted in respect. The budget gets to your balance, and your revenues is what we've actually received. And if you look to the right, the percentage received in revenues is way over fifty percent. And if you look at the bottom, your expenditures is up under fifty percent. So this is encouraging. This is letting us know we got more revenues in, and our expenditures are less. So we're kind of monitoring how we're spending our funds. The third page I gave you is a page that you don't normally get. It is actually from the general fund. The page before was all revenues that we received from all fund sources. But this third page is consisting with the general fund, which is what we all worry about with where we are with money. Again, this is encouraging the remaining balance here. If you'll look at just the general fund, our revenues was two hundred and twenty-seven million. Our actual revenues that we received, even though she budgeted two twenty-seven, we only received a hundred and twenty-three million. And it's still at fifty-four percent of revenues that we've received. So that's way over fifty percent, which is again, this is still encouraging to know that we're moving on up and that we're actually monitoring our dollars, and we're actually spending less frugal as we can. If you look at your expenditures, they're also down, they're forty-eight point five percent. And I did a comparison of two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, and sixteen. So I went back and did a whole month comparison. And so looking at it now, what we are today, and we are waiting through the school year, so it's still with you. Are there any questions or concerns?
I have a comment. You have done very good, and I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I love your hair.
Thank you. Thank you. And if you, yes, sir?
I'm looking, and I've just, and we've been just about halfway through the, you know, the year with respect to expenditures. Whereas you, what we have is about six months of expenses that's been expended from the total budget, if you're looking at.
Correct.
So we got six more months to go, which we're at fifty percent. And certainly, we have got the other fifty percent from now to October that we need to receive as well as expand. Do we expect then during the summers that some of these expenses, as far as maybe operation and maintenance or...
Now, operation and maintenance is kind of like a fix-it with breakdowns. They will still be doing...
So they vary, they vary during some...
Operation and maintenance varies, because it's like repairing what needed to have been repaired in breakdowns, especially with the air conditioning and all of that stuff. So they're still being, I've restricted them along with Mr. Dotson, but Rudolph, that we're no longer doing a year's of blanket. I broke it down to three months so that we can kind of monitor and know what we're spending. So when he puts a budget together for a team, we will do a comparison of what we've already spent and just allow only so much. So there's a lot of things that he needs money for to fix or whatever, and he consults with me before we're doing it.
Well, actually, a lot of...
It's pretty, we're looking pretty good, we just still don't have that.
Well, you look like it's, it's holding, look like it's maintaining, because you're about at fifty percent for each of the areas of expenditures.
Yes, sir.
That to me sent, you know, sends a pretty good message in regards to how much money is being spent, such that we won't go a hundred percent away anything, or a hundred twenty-one percent over a budget. You know, I think you're holding it in line here as far as what I can tell, as well as the fact that we've got almost, are you saying here, we got seventeen million dollars in unreserved funds?
Well, we've received like ninety-six percent of our Appaloisean taxes.
Well, this is what this is saying. Well, I'm trying to understand if we got enough money. I mean, that's what it's saying. Seventeen million unreserved fund balance, is that not true?
But now, that's not what the statement said.
Oh, we got expended to, it's got to come out money. It's unreserved then, it's unreserved. What do you mean, unreserved? It's got to be paid, money still has to come out of there.
Yes, sir.
So it's a reserve or something, and we got to get that straight.
It goes up and down as we spend, or as we go back in and void purchase orders or blankets that's not being used. So it trickles up and down, but no, sir, we don't have that one...
That's what I was looking at.
The state has already made their consideration from looking at the September thirtieth financial, what area that they look at to calculate our reserve fund balance.
Good job.
Okay, also in your packet, there is something dealing with the...
Credit card.
Credit card, yes, ma'am. I'd like for you to just read that. If you have any questions, please call me.
Yeah.
Or you can send me any...
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Palmer, real quick, Mr. President, how close are we to our one-month reserve percentage wise?
Not right now, not here, because the state has already determined that one-month, you say, reserve fund balance. We're about halfway there, just a short, because they use a different figure than what we look at. They use our bottom line fund equity figure. They didn't really, if you look at your September, go back to your September, and the line that they use, that is not what we actually look at when I talk with the State. They look at that bottom, um... September, y'all stayed here so long, y'all got me sweetened. Anyway, but they look at September by the line of fund equity. They don't look at our unreserved fund balance. We use the unreserved fund balance for our one-month operating expense.
And one last question. When they did the ten percent raise for their schools, where exactly did that money, where did they pull that resource from?
I think the ten percent that, that...
Yeah, just out of curiosity.
What's ten percent?
That they are giving to the principals?
I have no, I have talked to Superintendent Allen about that. They, that doesn't come from...
I just thought maybe they talked to him.
It's not from MPS, so... That's what I was supposed to do. You talked to Superintendent Allen about that.
I do not have the money.
You will have it.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer, for everything.
I'm so glad I come to with Superintendent Allen that I need signed by the State Examiner. We talked to her about the last time. She's passed it around, trying to get that. I don't know about it. Any more questions?
I wouldn't know about it.
You know about some, but signing.
Mr. Porterfield, you have any more questions?
No, I don't have any. I've, I've tried, it was a long.
Apparently, it's my understanding, and y'all can just go ahead and know that I got a phone call today that some of the past CSFO blocked some of my receipts from the trip. And so what I wanted to ask you is, from now on, there is a app that we could often on our phone that when we're on our trip, if we take a photograph of the receipt, it'll, we can automate the email or text it to you and then give you the original copies. That way, we have a backup copy of the receipts with that word for you.
I guess it would, but original receipts are what we have to actually have.
I agree, but what I'm saying is for...
But if, you know, like you said, if you'll take a picture of it, and just, we just have to see original swamps. But my thing of is, we were looking, still, we're still researching and looking through files to find everything that we can, but we see where the bill was paid. If you cannot find it, it's okay, you can just write a note, then you either turn it in or have a discussion. Just send me an email that you did turn it in.
Okay.
Thank you.
My CFL's short...
Okay, all right. You're all aware of the support that Ron Glover gave to the CSFO and Finance Office. He gave his services pro bono because of the ethic rules that wouldn't allow him to get paid. He had to wait two years to be offered support, financial support for his services. So April marks the two years, and we can now offer him a contract to continue with the transition of Mr. Taylor and to continue to help Brenda. And you have a copy of the employment contract that we won't use with Mr. Glover. So if there are any questions about that, we'll try to answer them for you. Okay. We're good, if you don't...
Oh, it's clear, time, pass.
Okay. If I've got any questions, I'm going to push to... Okay.
Right, that's what we need to know, that's what we need to know. Okay, damn. Did we have, we're now to the consent for approval agenda, consent, consent agenda?
Mr. President, I just would like that we vote on March twenty-ninth separately. And I know this is on the consent agenda.
March twenty-ninth separately?
Yes. We vote on the board minutes, bid, report, and addendum first, and then when we move down to consent for approval, that we vote on the March twenty-ninth. I was not in attendance at either one of those, and I wanted the minutes to reflect that I was not at the board meetings. I wasn't part of the official record.
Okay, are there objections to our voting on these minutes separately, the March fourth and twenty-ninth? Here none, let's move forward then. For the consent agenda, March fourteenth, those who are in favor, please. Since we're not going to do, we're itemizing each of these, right?
No, just pulling out twenty-nine.
We're pulling out twenty-nine, okay. We're voting separately, okay. The motion for the consent agenda, please.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda, A and B minus the March twenty-ninth minutes.
Okay. It's been properly moved in the second that we accept the consent agenda for A, B, move twenty-nine to C. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those who are in favor, let's see if I show a band. Okay, it's passed unanimously.
Okay.
We have to do D, we have to do C. Now, we have to just do twenty-ninth. It has been moved to... Uh, it has been moved to C, the twenty-ninth board minutes. Do we have a motion to, um, let's say, approve?
Mr. President, I move that we...
Our second is March twenty-nine.
It has been moved, right, it has been moved properly second that we approve the, uh, twenty-ninth. The, uh, minutes for the twenty-ninth, uh, it has been moved properly second, is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, let's see if I show your hands. Any abstentions? Five, four, uh, one abstention. One abstention. She wasn't here, so she abstained.
Are you ready?
Uh, we're ready for the consent for approval, A, first, go ahead, personnel.
I recommend the approval of the personnel report, certified and support personnel.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the personnel report certified support personnel.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second that we accept the personnel report, both certified and support personnel. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, those who are in favor, let's see if I show your hands. It is unanimous.
I recommend the approval of the expulsion report.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the recommendation of our superintendent and accept the expulsion reports.
It's been moved properly second that we accept President's, the superintendent's recommendation of the expulsion report. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, those who are in favor, let's see if I show your hands. Okay, it's unanimous. Pass those hands, please, yeah. Okay, academic.
Okay, uh, I move that we approve the ASU academic graduation resolution.
Now, Mr. President, I...
Y'all, I tell you what, y'all get, can you get it right? Can somebody get it right tonight?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
That we accept the recommendation, Superintendent, for the ASU academic graduation.
Second.
It's been moved properly second, we accept superintendent's recommendation for the ASU academic graduation, uh, resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah. Oh, you've already voted without discussion? No, unanimous, they're moving forward, unanimous.
Alright, I, I recommend the approval of the CSFO support contract for Ron Glover.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the recommendation to, for the CSFO's contract.
It has been moved in properly second, is there discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, let's see if I show your hands. Uh-oh. Uh, the, those who, uh, any of your opposers, abstentions? One abstention.
I recommend the approval of the lamp logo change.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Thank you.
We approve the lamp logo.
A second.
Has been moved properly second that we approve the lamp logo change. Any discussion? Those who are in favor, show your hands. Okay, it is unanimous.
Okay, um, I move that we approve, I'm sorry, I recommend the approval of the BTW feasibility study.
Mr. President, I move that we accept superintendent's recommendation.
I second it.
And it's, you didn't give her a chance to finish what you wrote as well, but that's okay, we're moving on.
So it's okay.
Okay, we're good, we're good. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, those who are in favor, let's see if I show your hands. Okay, it's unanimous. Oh, that then brings us to the end of our journey for today, so...
One thing, one thing. Graduation for BTW, no, for Lamb is on Tuesday, May sixteenth at six o'clock and we've got board meeting at five o'clock. And we changed our board meeting to noon.
What's the pleasure of the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I just hear the staff, you just... The staff, it's okay, okay.
Uh, would you guys rather have it at twelve?
Yes. I just want you to know, getting personal, that my child will be graduating.
At twelve?
For Lamb.
Oh, okay, great, that's great, congratulations, but it's not at twelve o'clock, noon is...
As long as it's not a break hour for me.
So, May sixteenth will be...
Twelve, noon?
Noon.
Alright, we all done agreed. No further discussions, we declare this meeting a...